Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, October 6, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is Citizen Input. There's no one in the room for Citizen Input. Is there anybody on Zoom with maybe a raised hand feature or a phone number? Seeing none. We do have a few items here. So there's Lady Catherine Cottle asking about 1994 order referring to park designated properties in Deschutes County. As I say, I will, I'll take time to call her back and make sure I understand what she's asking here. There is an order that's on place for specific Deschutes County parcels. And then also multiple emails and input on wildlife overlay, the wildlife area overlay discussion coming around. We had our public board meeting on that last week and talked about it and the future choices we make on that. So multiple items on that. Want to thank everybody for being so engaged on that topic. And that will be part as an input to the comprehensive plan of Deschutes County, which is an effort we've been working on. Is there anything else from the commissioners?
Um, nothing this morning.
Yeah, just starting off. Okay. So at this time Consent Agenda. There's four items.
So move approval.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Item number five, consideration of signature of document for school-based health center. So number five and number six are going to both be this topic. Hello, Tom Coon. You're on mute. We're so close. There you go.
Shannon Brister is also going to join for these, for these two items.
Very good. Here we go. Hello. Good morning. So yeah, school-based health center for Bend High School. Go ahead.
For the record, I'm Tom Coon, Community Health Manager at Deschutes County Health Services. Chan.
And I'm Shannon Brister-Rogust, Program Manager for Comprehensive Care for Youth and Families, which encompasses the school-based health centers.
Yeah. So thanks for having us here today. And so the two items, the Bend High and Ensworth contracts essentially can be combined into one item. We're here with you today because we've been the, kind of the pass-through administrators, at least in public health, for the school-based health center grants. And since 2013, Mosaic Medical has been serving as a medical sponsor for both Bend and Ensworth Elementary School-Based Health Centers. And we, in addition to these school-based health centers, have four other school-based health centers. We have Lynch in Redmond, Redmond High School. We have Sisters High School and Lapine High School. So we have school-based health centers in other locations, but we're coming to you today because this year, we decided to make the school-based contracts two-year contracts instead of one-year contracts. And the funding amounts for these two schools is higher than the other school-based health centers. So that put us over the threshold for commissioner approval for these contracts. So that's why we're here today for just these two. And as I had mentioned, I'm, public health is the overseer of the contracts with our medical sponsors at the school-based health centers. They provide various services for children up to 18 years of age, things such as just primary care, visits, diagnostic treatment of injuries, acute illness, routine physicals, immunizations. And also, if a parent comes in with a child to the school-based health center, they could possibly get a vaccination at that time, or even a COVID vaccine. So there are some limited services that a parent can get when they bring in their child. And also, we provide funding for behavioral health services. And Shannon, if you wanted to talk briefly about that.
Yeah. So we provide, so the neat thing about school-based health centers is it's an integrated care model that looks at both physical health and then behavioral health and again, offered on school campuses. And so part of this funding goes to support behavioral health consultants that are embedded with Mosaic. And then we provide Deschutes County behavioral health therapists. So we use this integrated model to identify someone through primary care that maybe needs behavioral health support, or the flip side, identify someone through behavioral health that maybe needs primary care support. So it's a really nice complete package that's offered to students and like Tom said, families who come in. You don't have to attend Bend High or Ensworth to, to access those services, even though they're embedded on the, on the school grounds. So anybody that's within the age range can, can receive services.
So this is Mosaic Medical providing these, these school-based health centers. Who's the provider at the other four? Just for our information real quick.
Yeah. So we have Lapine Community Health Clinic that supports both Lapine and Eagle Crest. And then in Sisters, we have, we have St. Charles.
And then Mosaic also does the two Redmond clinics as well.
Thank you. Commissioner. I, I, I knew that behavioral health, county behavioral health was providing therapists at the school-based health centers, but I didn't, I guess I still don't understand what the behavioral health consultants that Mosaic hires do. Like what's kind of, like how do those two entities coordinate and divide labor?
Yeah. So this is a really important role because some people are not willing to go to mental health to receive services. They're only willing to go into, to physical health. And sometimes individuals will go into physical health and maybe have physical symptoms that are associated with a behavioral health need. And so the behavioral health consultant will work with that person until they're ready to access care. Sometimes they'll work with them and be able to meet the immediate need, maybe just through a few, a few small sessions. But if they need more support, then they're able to refer to us and do that warm handoff. For example, if we look at just the amount of visits that we had at, at Ensworth, 60% of them were high acuity mental health needs. And so the consultant is really important in being able to identify early by working closely with the Mosaic medical provider, and then helping get that person connected to care.
Interesting. So when someone comes into a school-based health center presenting physical health issues, is that consultant there right alongside a nurse or someone?
They're, they're all at the same clinic. And so yes, they can be. There's no wrong door to accessing services the way this model's set up. You can come in for mental health or physical health. And then again, like I said, we're trying to integrate the two because we know they go hand in hand. So yeah, the consultant works directly with the medical provider to identify needs and then come up with a care plan based on the individual needs. As you can imagine, not everybody that goes in there has a mental health need. But when they, when they do, this is the way to support them.
It's a real abridge, abridge role.
A bridge role for sure. Absolutely. And, and not, you know, like I said, I talked about the 60% of who we're seeing on the behavioral health side have high acuity needs. Not everybody has high acuity needs. So maybe it's, the consultant can provide some basic case management or connect to a resource. Maybe they, they can reach out because they already have a mental health therapist in the community and integrate and say, hey, we're, we're, we're providing the physical health piece. And then if they're not connected, then they can, they can link to our therapist.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Tom. Remember, we had the ask from Ben-Lapine School District? And a new program was going to be implemented to work in several of the schools. And I'm wondering, when are we going to have a report on what actually has been happening with that program? I know that they have to set it up. What did we approve it? You know, the first of June. So I'm wondering if there's any kind of a report we as commissioners might expect in the next month or so.
Well, yes, if you're, if you're referring to the Youth Success Partnership.
Yes.
We'll be providing an update today at 1:00 PM.
That's what the program, okay. Because I was wondering where that's going. So anyway, and then it has, it's at one, it has to be at one?
Yeah. So our schedule.
So our school partners can join.
Okay. All right. Yeah. It's about time.
So that's how our schedule came together today. So that was a time certain for this afternoon at 1:00. That's why we'll have executive sessions before lunch because there's only a few items on the agenda today. But we did just get slides for that. They were in our box this morning.
Right. And I was going to read it at noon.
Yep. There you go. It's coming.
Before our meeting. So, okay, great. I'm glad to hear that.
One more question about these two school-based health centers. Can you give us a sense of visitation or usage or clientele numbers, kind of, and trends over time? Are we, are these school-based health centers being used more and more by a broader set of the, the school population? Or are we fairly level? Or, I mean, I, I'm guessing that during COVID, all sorts of, not having kids physically at school probably impacted the, the usage of the school-based health centers. But do we have any sense before then, kind of what the trends were? Or what, what the uptake of this service is like?
Yeah. So, so for 2019, if you're looking at physical health, and forgive me, I have it all over here. So 2019, if you're looking at physical health, they actually saw an uptick in visits from in 2018, 2019 to 2019 to 2020. So 1,021 in 2018, 2019, and 1,083 in 2019 and 2020. So even with COVID, we saw a slight increase in numbers. See, and that was at Ensworth. Same to be true for mental health. We had 192 visits during the school year of 2018, 2019, and then 216 for the 2019, 2020 school year. So those numbers are similar for Bend High. There was a little bit of a dip in, a decrease in, in services in Bend High on the physical health side. So 934 physical health visits for the 2018 to 2019. And 2019 to 2020 was 868. And then for mental health providers, 2018 and 2019 was 194. And just a few less of 186 for the 2019 and 2020 school year.
Would it be possible for you to send us those numbers?
You bet.
Thank you.
I have the.
Those were a lot of numbers. I couldn't get them all cut.
Yeah, I know. It's, I have the fact sheets for all the, all of the school-based health centers. Would you like them all or just the ones that we're referencing today?
No, all of them would be great. It's always good to know. Thank you.
It's neat to know that, that, that trend is going in the right direction. That, you know, people are, people are, more and more people are aware of the service and are, are making use of it.
Yeah, absolutely. And just, just for the record, Ensworth Elementary is shifting to Mountain View High School, which we think is going to, and the space is going to be bigger and offer more support. So we think that that's going to even increase numbers. That's expected to happen at the, in June is our targeted timeframe for opening that.
So you're saying the clinic services will be moved from one, one facility to another?
From, from Ensworth. If you've been at Ensworth, they're, they're outgrowing their space. And so space needs indicate that Mountain View has a much bigger area to work with. And so that's already underway with, with the schools, Mosaic, and then approval from the state.
Great. Okay.
If you're not going to leave anything, then it's Ensworth?
Ensworth already doesn't have anything moving forward, even though it's still under the same name for the contract, because that's where all the funding is. The state is just in transition. Yeah. We, we do offer, we offer basic school-based services through referrals and to the same provider. So we work really closely with them.
And in all these schools, I mean, I, I know that in schools that don't have school-based health centers, there's a, there's a nurse, there's a school nurse in the school itself. In, in the school locations where there's a school-based health center, is there, is there less of that kind of basic in-school service? Because people can run across the street or, or, you know, to the other building to go to the school-based health center? Or do those schools still have nurses and kind of some basic care as well?
Yeah. The, the rules of the school nurses is different than, say, the providers at the school-based health centers. School-based health centers are doing primary care. Oftentimes, the school nurse is someone that attends to a student that gets, you know, bloody nose or maybe sprains their ankle or something kind of acute of that nature. So it's just a different type of service that's provided. So, so the schools all still have their school nurses regardless if there's a school-based health center.
So the dollars, I noticed that the first item for Bend High talks about $82,000. And then there's two $40,000 allocations. So I was expecting to see 41 maybe. So just, I thought Commissioner Dare was going to catch that.
You mean the 82?
Yeah. But so, and that's really not an issue. The question is, where are these dollars coming from? Are these general fund dollars up to Deschutes County? Or is the state backing us on that?
This is, this is from the state. It's a program element, program element 42, I believe. And this is just the same type of dollars, like say, our tobacco prevention or, or safe drinking water program, all of those. It's just another program element from the state. It's very steady, regular funding.
Great. Thank you very much.
And, and there is a, I'm kind of the, the instigator or the catalyst for these, these school-based health centers is a state school-based health center program. Is that right? I mean, there's, there was a, you know, a policy move or, you know, like a deliberate effort to set, set up school-based health centers around the state.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, that's, school-based health centers have been around, I believe, for over 10 years now. And even at one point, we had some of our staff working at the school-based clinics. But then we pulled back to allow like the FQHCs in the area to do it, since they're sometimes already seeing the parents and so forth. We thought that that arrangement worked better.
You'll see this on the fact sheets that I send you, that there are 79 school-based health centers throughout Oregon.
And we have a good chunk of them. That's neat.
We do have a big chunk of them.
So it is, it's 82,000 in the, in red on page 22 of that document. So anyway, it must, you must need to change the allocation then, I guess, Tom, to 41 and 41.
No. The reason for the additional 1,000 per year for Bend High School is we provide, we provide each of the medical sponsors a membership for kind of the State School-Based Health Center Association, and it costs $1,000 per year. So Mosaic, it's an additional 1,000 for that membership. And we just stick that in with the Bend High contract. So it's not with Bend High for a specific reason. It's meant for all of Mosaic.
Great. Good discussions. Is there a motion for the first item?
I move board approval and signature on document number 2021-600-Bend High School-Based Health Center.
I second it.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So the, the second part of this, item number six is consideration of same for Ensworth Elementary. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval and board signature of Ensworth Elementary School-Based Health Center document number 2021-602.
I'll second it.
All right.
But it's actually being moved from this school in what, when did you say?
Not until, not until the end of the school year. So it'll be in June. And that's, again, pending any building contracts. That date may, may change, but it's in the works.
We'll amend the contract when that is officially happened.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll see you this afternoon for the Youth Success Partnership update.
Sounds great.
Item number seven, Acceptance of Hazard Mitigation Grant.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Ed Keith, County Forester, here today to present a grant agreement for consideration of board signature. There's a, there's a bit of history here that I'm, I feel like I need to go over to cover what led us up to this point here. And it starts actually back in 2017. So in 2017, the Millie Fire near Sisters received a FEMA disaster declaration. And this was the second year that FEMA, by default, then for any disaster, any, any wildfire that was, received a presidential disaster declaration. There was some funding that went along with those disaster declarations to local governments. And we essentially became eligible for a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program grant. Those are fixed amounts. And they're broken into three different categories. One category was funding that helped us with our natural hazard mitigation plan, which is coming to a close. Another was funding to the Sheriff's Office and Emergency Management for a program to do structure assessments. That grant has been accepted as well and is with Emergency Management Shop. And this is the third piece of that funding. And that is the, the, the good majority of the funding, which is just shy of $500,000 for fuels mitigation. So we applied for this grant in 2018, presented it to the board at that time. So it's been, it's been a couple of years here since we, and would acknowledge, we have a new board now. So that's why I'm kind of going through this a little bit of detail. But, so we came up with a scope for this grant that included a few properties, mostly in the, or all in the greater Redmond area. It includes county property east of Redmond, large property that I'm sure you're familiar with, as well as some acres in Eagle Crest, the ridged Eagle Crest, as well as a community called Odin Falls, which is west, northwest of Redmond. So we, we included those in the scope to FEMA and applied for that grant at the end of 2018. One of the processes that FEMA goes through is they do an environmental assessment. So if they're going to spend dollars that include ground disturbance or vegetation disturbance, they, they do an environmental assessment. That was completed in 2020. And came to a close in early 2021 with a public comment period. And then just here more recently, FEMA did then obligate the dollars. I would note that a portion of this project area actually did experience a fire this summer. The East Antler Fire burned part of this property. So would note that when we applied for this property, what, a few of the justifications were that we have experienced fire starts on this property before. It's adjacent to the state highway and the airport, both of which were closed during the fire this summer. So even though people tend to think that our fire risk is concentrated in our forested lands to the west part of the county, the juniper and sage fuel type does pose a significant risk on the, on the right day, given wind and weather. So we were, we were concerned about getting this property treated and, and became even more, a little bit more urgent over the, the summer. So we're at the point now where FEMA has obligated the dollars. The dollars, in the case of FEMA grants, flow to the state first, and they go to the Office of Emergency Management. So FEMA has obligated those dollars to the state of Oregon. The state then has prepared this document, this before you today, this grant agreement. And that's the vehicle that moves the dollars from the state to the local government. And then we work with, well, in this case, some application for county lands, as well as work in cooperation with the private landowners where we'll be applying these funds. There is a 25% match on any grants that come from FEMA. So it's fairly straightforward with a, with a private landowner, we expect them to pay for 25% of the costs. When we did apply for this, we did talk to the board at the time, and they, they were in agreement to provide the, the match for the treatment on county lands. We didn't identify the actual source of those dollars because we didn't even know the exact year where those, where this grant would come in, since there is a bit of a delay in all the steps that FEMA has to go through to obligate these dollars. So, so that may be a point of discussion here today or in the future, once we start to bid out and know an actual cost for those projects is where we'd like to provide that match. Working with Tom Anderson, previous county administrator, he had suggested a couple possibilities for that match would either be general fund or TRT dollars, but would really be up to either board direction, or I can work directly with Nick and, and the Finance Director, Greg, to identify that once we have bids coming in. But do want to be clear with the board that any funds that we do apply to county lands will require 25% match. I'm guessing that over the next, this fiscal year and the next fiscal year, we'd probably be looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $75,000 to $100,000. So not a huge sum for, and it definitely does come with that 75% of federal funds. So it's a good chance for us to mitigate some of that risk on the rest of this property. And so with that, I guess I would just also note that as of now, this grant is set to run through January of 2023. The way that FEMA works is that they start their, their three-year performance period when we apply for the grant. So I do anticipate we'll be requesting a extension of at least 12 months to get these projects done. So I would take any questions or from the board.
I can see, that's why it's important to say that the OEM-provided grant agreement on September 23, 2021, you're just kind of documenting the dates as we go.
It's, it's, it's a kind of an arduous process.
Yep.
Ed, I didn't, I didn't fully track the, when we're talking about the, the remainder of the match, besides what the county will cover for county property, the, where the, the rest of the match was going to come from? I mean, is this, you will basically leverage some, some match from the private landowners who benefit from the program?
Yes. And for example, been working pretty closely with the Ridged Eagle Crest Homeowners' Association, and they have budgeted some funds for this. So as we then go out and get a bid from a contractor to do this work, once we actually know the exact price, that we enter into an agreement with that landowner, a written agreement that says, upon completion of this project, you will pay this amount of funds, which represents 25% of the project costs.
Got it. So the application was made in 2018, and the environmental assessment work in 2020, was, that was in anticipation of approval? And then who, yeah, was that a county project or a subcontractor? You know, what's, what does that look like?
FEMA engages with a subcontractor to write up the environmental assessment. And that includes a cultural resource survey, where they actually go out on the ground and. and look for pre-settlement items, things that might need to be avoided if we're doing ground disturbance, those sorts of things. They do have a couple of those inventory that are required to be buffered. They also, you know, ask us to provide data in regards to working in, adjacent to any water bodies or any endangered species we might be aware of, or that they have in inventory. And in the end, they, for this project, they did end up issuing what's called a FANCY, or a Finding of No Significant Impact, which is what we need to get to in order for them to basically obligate those dollars and be in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act.
Great.
Ed, I, I find it a bit fascinating that, okay, so the Millie Fire started August 11th of 2017. Okay, four plus years later, we're getting this funding, but actually, okay, that was at the other end of Sisters. I mean, I saw that little fire start on that morning, and there was a little plane flying around it. And then that night, the wind was 35 miles an hour and it blew up. So what, did it burn like 27,000 acres or something? I mean, it was, it was pretty huge. But then again, now we're actually doing this work in another part of Deschutes County. And I, you know, I can understand the ridge, I drive by there and I see, you know, that area. But still, it seems interesting that we're cleaning up over here, and yet the fire that we actually applied for, Grant, was a couple of miles down the road.
It's, it's true. The, the sideboards on the funding are that the funds would have to be spent within the county that received the disaster declaration. So we have some flexibility in where we might want to apply these funds. One of the reasons that I chose a focus of Redmond is because, well, for one, of course, we can't apply these funds to federal lands. So we're looking at private lands within the county. The other thing is that we have a fair amount of other funding sources for communities and private lands that are adjacent to forested areas or adjacent to federal Forest Service lands. For example, at the time we applied for this, we had funding for the Greater Lapine Basin through a Joint Chiefs project. We now have a Joint Chiefs project that runs up from Bend all the way up through Camp Sherman for private lands, say around the Sisters area, for example. But as you move out further away from the Forest Service lands, there's, there's less opportunity to find funding to do fuels reduction work. So this was an opportunity for another part of the county that is, is generally kind of left out of funding opportunities to look for areas that were also high priority or high risk. But we couldn't say apply for a Joint Chiefs funding or other, other funding through the Forest Service Community Assistance, for example, because it's too far away for, for being adjacent to Forest Service lands.
Thank you, Ed. Thanks for that clarification. I mean, I don't, I, you know, just nice to hear why it's actually going to be done in Redmond around, you know, the ridge and everything. You can definitely see the need, you know, there's a lot of underbrush and trees that haven't been cleaned up and everything. So I appreciate that.
Since we, since we're harkening back to the Millie Fire, it's actually a really good opportunity to talk about some important lessons from that fire. Particularly from our, our colleague county commissioners around eastern Oregon, I hear a lot of skepticism about both the fuels reduction and forest restoration work that the Forest Service is attempting to do, and about collaboration. And I can tell you that one of the main reasons why the 2017 Millie Fire didn't burn into subdivisions was because of those two, two things. The, because of the Deschutes National Forests' approach to fuels reduction, and because of the collaboration that allowed millions of dollars to flow into the Deschutes Collaborative Forest Restoration Project landscape over the last 12 years to implement 120,000 acres of treatments. Without those treatments, it is very possible that the Millie Fire would have burned into subdivisions in the Sisters, Greater Sisters area. And so as we kind of move forward, we're thinking about fire and mitigation of fire risk on federal lands. The, the Millie Fire is actually an extremely important recent example that we can point to to say that what we're doing here in Deschutes County, which many of our colleague counties in eastern Oregon refuse to do, is actually very successful and, you know, is insulating us from, protecting us from great losses and suffering.
So when you say counties refuse to do, are you referring to the collaborative participation?
The collaborative participation and just sort of clinging to a perspective that, that the problem is environmental review processes, and that the problem isn't, you know, well, in my opinion, what the problem really is, is, is that to treat these lands costs a lot of money, and the amount of commercial material you can get out of them only covers part of that cost. So the refusal to acknowledge that is blocking many, many communities from having access to the funds that they need to complete the treatments. So I don't know if I did a good job of explaining it.
Well, yeah, so, but, so having a, a collaborative, firing on all cylinders, working together well, coming to a prescription that, that people agree to, and then having federal dollars flow to help make the, the big choices about fuel reduction for community safety, knowing that it isn't as much of a commercial, you know, it isn't viable commercially as it had been generations ago.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to, you know.
I mean, and, and, yeah, I mean, the, the commercial logging that was done generations ago wasn't fuels reduction. It was, it was, you know, it was getting sawlogs out of the woods. But our job now is to keep our communities from burning to the ground. And there's only so much commercial material to be had because these are, these are slow-growing eastern Oregon forests. And they have, you know, you, you look around, for example, the Sisters area, they've been, you know, they've been harvested, you know, every 20, 30, 40 years for, for, for a century. So there's, there is extremely minimal commercial value to be had. And so kind of the, the, the ideological belief that, you know, if you just take off the handcuffs, we can do this work and it'll pay for itself, is, it's not supported by fact. And the sooner that we can get past that, and we can, you know, develop approaches that acknowledge, acknowledge the subsidy that's needed, and engage everyone who needs to be involved in a collaborative way, the faster we're going to get to the, the treatments that, again, protect our communities from burning to the ground.
I do want to acknowledge, thank you, Ed. And Nathan took me on a tour in 19, and we went through Tollgate. And I, I think about 98% of the residences there had done an outstanding job of having their property totally cleaned up. You know, no limbs were touching tree, you know, rooftops. I mean, it was, it was really a great day, and checking on access, how do people get out? If one access is closed because of the fire, you never know what direction a fire is coming from. So that was just really a worthwhile day. We also visited Sundance that day, and, you know, where the fire had gone through, what, in the 90s? So anyway, I just feel like the community itself is incredibly aware. And I know we've had, we had some really big fires in Oregon this year, though, what was it, 400 and some thousand acres that burned down, you know, Klamath Lake over, and the amount of loss there was incredible. And you just, you realize that, I think we, you know, we were really fortunate again. So the fact that, you know, we're, we're going into hopefully the rainy snowy season. And it, hopefully, we're going to have a lot of rain and a lot of snow.
That's the plan.
Yes, that is the plan.
Because the luck we've had the last couple of years, I mean, we, we did, we did have some, you know, five, eight, whatever, you know, significant scale fires this year, but the luck we've had the last two years, it can't last.
So, so the treatments, just one of my last thoughts is the treatments that are proposed, are they all kind of the same as any of these juniper, sage areas, where maybe juniper fuel reduction is going to be the key to this?
That's correct. They are very similar in that there might be an isolated pine tree here or there, but comprised of, you know, 98% or more juniper, where we'd be focusing on taking out the smallest juniper and reducing the brush as well. The brush is really what carries the fire in a lot of cases. So reducing the bitter brush, sage brush, limbing the larger trees, taking out the smaller juniper, and just kind of resetting that back to a point where hopefully, if there is a fire, it stays on the ground, can be caught relatively easily and safely by firefighters before it reaches structures.
So I move approval of board signature of document number 2021-789, a grant agreement with the Oregon Office of Emergency Management.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes? Thank you very much. Good discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
And item number eight, 2021 Revision of Greater Bend Community Wildfire Protection Plan.
All right.
I don't know if we had paperwork on this one.
I don't have anything.
Yeah, so the latest version of. So it was on our agenda, but it just wasn't in our packet.
It was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, so.
It was the packet a couple of weeks ago, it was real thick.
Good, thick one. So we've had it, but we, yeah, we don't have it today as part of our paperwork flow. So just lead us through.
Okay. It's posted online, so it is available for the public view. Sorry about that. I, I thought I would turn this over to Boone to kind of give you an overview of the, this plan revision for Greater Bend. He's the one that really kind of spearheaded the, the partners in revising this process through this, the last few months. So I'm going to turn it over to Boone.
Morning Commissioners. Just for the record, Boone Zimmerman, Fire Adapted Communities Coordinator for Deschutes County. Like Ed said, I'll run through the CWPPs in the Greater Bend. So the Greater Bend Community Wildfire Protection Plan was up for revision in 2021, or CWPP as it's commonly referred to. But we, in the Deschutes area, we have, Deschutes County area, we have seven CWPPs that are on a five-year rotation for updating. And for 21, the Greater Bend was the one that we had revised. Just as a reminder, CWPPs are a non-regulatory document that provides a common vision, common vision and goals for all of our participating partners. We started the process of the revision this last year in April, and we held a series of meetings through May to compile all of our accomplishments over the last five years, identified priorities, recommendations, and our action plan, and then we also put it out to public review. The partners that we had that participated in this revision was the U.S. Forest Service, Bureau of Land Management, Oregon Department of Forestry, City of Bend, Bend Fire and Rescue, Bend Parks and Rec, Deschutes Fire District Number Two, Deschutes County Planning Department, Deschutes Sheriff's Office Emergency Management, and then along with several of our communities throughout the, the planning area. So quite a good group of folks there. The revision updates included some map adjustments in the southeast corner of Bend. Some of that was to move the border actually out a little bit, to incorporate more Forest Service ground, which would then be considered Wildland Urban Interface, so the WUI. We also used the Oregon Wildfire Risk Explorer, and that was for consistency purposes between all of the CWPPs that we have revised over this last couple of years. And the, the Oregon Wildfire Risk Explorer is the, you know, uses the data from the quantitative risk assessment, but it uses some inputs such as ownership, the fuels out there, values at risk, and some of that fire history. Then the outputs that we were able to look at, it helps to quantify our WUI hazard rating. So our Wildland Urban Interface's hazard rating, wildfire, fire risk, the wildfire threat, and then our potential impacts from our wildfire. And that's consistent across all of the plans that we've been updating since the Oregon Wildfire Risk Explorer came out in 2019. We did update all the accomplishments between all those partners that I listed above this year. There were a couple of additions of some partners that have been there, but we also kind of pulled, pulled to light some of the work that they've been doing. So City of Bend, Bend Parks and Rec, and then the County Planning Department. And that was, the County Planning Department was, the West Side Transsect was one of the accomplishments that we wanted to make sure that we were capturing in that plan. And we also updated the critical transportation routes, and we added a map to the end of that. So that was a new addition as well to the CWPP. So we did put this out to public review. We opened it up for a comment period that started in late July. Our plan was to have it out for 30 days, but we had it out well over 30 days. So July 22nd, we had a, held a public meeting for it. And then we held it open for public review out until the 1st of September, a little past the 1st there. Right now, the CWPP is in, in draft form, and that can be found on the Project Wildfire webpage. And then also, once we have this signed, we'll have it up to the webpage as well. All of the other CWPPs are also at that location if you're interested in any of those. But at this time, I think the CWPP is, is ready for signature and implementation. And if you guys have any questions, I'm open to any questions you may have.
Great, thank you so much. You know, I think of these Community Wildfire Protection Plans, and the content you just listed is wonderful, knowing that there are changes over, over the period of time. You know, the neighborhood associations, you think of yourself, if you're on a neighborhood association board, and you hear about this thing called a Community Wildfire Protection Plan, just seeing it for the first time is so valuable. It just puts everything in perspective. New residents, I think of, you know, any individual homeowner or a Realtor even, working in the area. This is just a little bit of gold for people when they, when, you know, and it's not our whole lives, but the moment you think about, am I safe in this fire-adapted area? This is the document that can, you know, really kind of lay out the, the scope and the, you know, preparedness of a possible wildfire event. So I'm always excited knowing that, you know, these things come to a conclusion with a great input. But when people find them, you know, that, that's what I'm excited about, when, you know, residents see these documents.
And it's a great thing that we're updating our CWPPs in, in Deschutes County on a five-year cycle because, you know, fortunately, a lot of times, conditions change for the better because people are doing a lot of good work, and it's important to recognize that and to understand at any point in time where the, where the real risk is at, and where the, the work, you know, where now in 2021, where the work needs to be done. So thank you for that diligent work in constantly updating these CWPPs. I would, I would also, I, I wanted to ask a little bit about the data sets that are used in the, in the development of the CWPPs and try to understand, you know, we're, we're tracking right now some statewide mapping efforts that are happening under SB 762. And I, I'm, I'm just curious whether some of the data sets that you mentioned that we are using to build these CWPPs or to inform these CWPPs, are the same data sets or overlapping data sets with, you know, what they're, what they're using to try to build those statewide maps for 762 right now? Or kind of like how the, you know, what the interplay is?
So as I understand, and Ed can add to this, but the Senate Bill 762 has identified the Oregon, through the quantitative risk assessment, as the backbone of the risk assessment as they're looking at the rating through the state. And that's, that's the same for the Oregon Wildfire Risk Explorer. That is the quantitative risk assessment data that is, that is housed on the Oregon Wildfire Risk Explorer. And the Oregon Wildfire Risk Explorer was put together by OSU, ODF, and the Forest Service as basically a, a place that you can look at that data and then pull reports for purposes like the CWPP. purposes like the CWPP.
So I would just add, listening into some of the rulemaking processes around Senate Bill 762, yes, they are leaning very heavily on this data that is found in the Oregon Wildfire Risk Explorer. Just in the last week, they were discussing, you know, fire frequency, using a combination of the fire frequency data and the fire intensity data to basically layer those two on top of each other and come up with that risk layer that's required for Senate Bill 762 with the five adjective ratings from low, moderate, high, all the way up through extreme. And those are, those data sets are represented in this risk assessment. I'm sorry you don't have it in front of you, but, you know, starting on page 204 of the packets or 40, page 48 of the plan, and then rolling through those next few pages, people can get a feel for what that risk looks like for the Greater Bend area. Or they could, you know, go to the Oregon Wildfire Risk Explorer data and look at a couple of those layers, the flame length and fire intensity layers and the, and the overall wildfire risk layer. I don't think it's going to be an exact translation just because of the way that the Senate Bill does call for them breaking that into adjective classes. And right now, it's not broken out in that way, but it's going to use the same data that's on there, but it's translated in a way that correspond with, with the legislation. So I think that if we're looking for clues of how we might be rated in Deschutes County, definitely looking at this, the risk assessment process that we're using would let us, kind of lead us down the path of where we might land on that risk assessment.
Thanks. Thanks for anticipating where I was going with that, Ed, yeah.
Now we're going to have a copy of the proposed CWPP in our hand right now.
I know, I remember seeing a lot of red in the map, so.
I do want to mention, I think it's really outstanding that we expanded fire free in 2020, and, and clearly even expanded it this, this year, 2021. The amount of trips that went to the transfer station and not landfill in 2020, remember? People were in lockdown, and it was like, it was a wonderful trip to go to and clean up your yard and go to the dump. So anyway, I mean, people were talking about it. It was really amazing. And then the fact that the numbers are still as high, I really, I'm glad. It may have cost the county almost a half a million dollars, but I feel like, you know, just losing one home, you know, would cost that in Deschutes County. So we really, I'm hoping that next year, people plan ahead and really want to, you know, clean up because that's what you need to, everyone needs to be personally responsible and do their part and, you know, get your gutters cleaned out. It's, it's important.
And, and we have some real opportunities to build on the success that we've had and do more. There's, just the other day, Ed and I were talking to some community or neighborhood leaders from Aubrey Butte, and they were explaining how every year, they, they, they get a couple of dumpsters set up in their, you know, in, in various neighborhoods for a week or two weeks, and people, you know, people just bring their yard debris right to the dumpster, you know, right in their neighborhood instead of having to haul out to the, to the landfill or a transfer station. And that is, you know, obviously, the folks in, on Aubrey Butte have more resources to work with, and they can, they can make those kinds of opportunities more available to their, their residents. But I think that, again, the, the more we can think about making it easy and accessible for Deschutes County residents to get their, you know, get their fuel off their landscape and get it to go somewhere else where it will be composted or, or, you know, used for some other purpose, the safer we're going to be. And we heard calls from many people this spring asking, you know, you know, why can't I get a yard debris bin at, at my house? And, you know, what can you do to, what can you do to make it easier for my neighbor to get rid of this stuff so that he doesn't do a pile burn at his house and, you know, in, in, in March, when now we understand it's actually a risk to do that, you know, in my community? So your fire season is, is winding down for this year, but I, I think that provides a great opportunity for us to think this winter, to work this winter on, you know, how do we make disposal of, of fuel more accessible and easy for, for residents of the community?
Well, and it's a function of density also, as, because I struggled, not struggled, but I had to research this and think about what's a good cleanup strategy in my neighborhood and my property personally. And it's just having a safe burn pile, you know, because there's plenty of elbow room out there. So it's, it's not truly moving it for everybody. It's, it is for most, you know, most denser areas, obviously, but.
Right, but we, you know, we have, we have, we have, you know, we have subdivisions in the Sisters area, for example, that don't have.
Yeah.
They don't, they can't get a yard debris bin right now, so.
But each, yeah, each person, each neighborhood, each blotting pattern is a little different, you know, and the elevation changes too, and, you know, does the smoke really move? And the, the function of ponderosa trees per acre, I mean, because those things will drop a whole couple inch or two needles annually, and you just clean them up. Where'd they all come from again?
It's great exercise.
Yeah.
Right, you're breathing fresh air, it's outside. I know, we have the juniper trees that I, oh my gosh, they drop and drop and drop, so.
Okay, so this is the Board of Commissioners' acceptance of this revision to get it from a draft version to its finalized version for 2021 publication.
That's correct. And I just would want to note, because I, I do think you're hitting on with your previous comments, one of the very key points of this community wildfire protection plan is individuals that are taking action on their own properties to protect their own homes. It really does rely, you know, that this concept of defensible spaces, you know, that the, the private landowner taking action immediately around their home is what's going to make the biggest difference of whether their home survives a wildfire. And that, that really is called out in the, the plan, Plan Page 34 with recommendations on how people can reduce their vulnerability to wildfire. And so thank you for calling that out.
Is there a motion?
Yes. I move approval of board signature of document number 2021-805, the Greater Bend Community Wildfire Protection Plan 21, 20, 2021 update.
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much.
If I could ask one more question. Ed, with the defensible space requirements coming from SB 762, or Ed, or Boone, you can, either of you, either one of you could comment on this, does that change our CWPPs moving forward? Like what, what they say or what they kind of recommend or, or, or push for?
I would say yes, a little bit unknown. So we did put a, an acknowledgement that we're expecting some of those changes to come, even though the specifics are not known. So we did note that in this version of the plan. As those requirements roll out, we would definitely be updating our language to be consistent with what's required so that if people are looking for requirements or, or, you know, want to be sure that they're, you know, in compliance or doing things in accordance with what's required, we'll definitely have language in there that, so they can go and find that in an easily accessible way. So, so for now, we kind of have a placeholder that I believe is just a couple paragraphs, but just acknowledging that some of those things are kind of on the horizon. And then as we're, as those things become more clear for our next update, we'd definitely be expanding on that.
Thank you.
I think it's really important, especially because we have a lot of new residents in our community. And in Bend, you can call Bend Fire and Rescue for a free home assessment, or Oregon Department of Forestry, or maybe even Ed can do that once in a while. So I think it's really, I don't know, Ed, if you ever have time for that, but I think it's really important if you, oh, Boone.
There you go, there you go.
Anyway, I think it's incredibly important, if you have not lived in like a fire community, you really need to get your game up. So anyway, call Boone. Thank you, Boone.
I would add to that also, Commissioner, just, you know, Sisters Fire, Sisters Camp Chairman are quite active in that kind of engagement as well with the community. They have their citizens group, is their.
Fire Corps.
Fire Corps, thank you. Their Fire Corps folks that come out to your home as well. So depending on where you are, generally, somebody is there to come out.
And back to Commissioner Chang's comment, I just would note, as I was scrolling around, that the reference to Senate Bill 762 is on page 26 of the plan, or 182 of the packet page. So if people are looking for that, that'd be where to find it.
So then acknowledging other groups signing this agreement, so Bend Fire and Rescue, City of Bend itself, State Department of Forestry, and then the Deschutes County Rural Fire District Number Two. So has this gone in front of the city council yet?
No, it has not. We were starting here, and then we're going to proceed forward.
Well, hopefully, they can have a real good discussion like this also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So at this time, we do have other items and an executive session before lunch. It's 10 o'clock, and then as I say, our agenda came together because of the requested time of 1 o'clock for the Youth Success Partnership. So we can go with other items at this time. Looks like Peter Gatawski is ready.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Peter Gatawski, Planning Manager. Before you, our two handouts in coordination with, with our chairman and Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel, there's a strikeout version and a clean version before you. The strikeout ver, excuse me, not strikeout, it's an underlying version to add an additional whereas clause, and.
So this is appointment, order for cannabis advisory panels, what we're referring to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So the world knows, yeah.
Yes, thank you. I should have introduced that. Yes, staff is returning with a board order that would appoint eight members to a cannabis advisory panel. The first meeting is scheduled for October 18th. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll turn it over to you in terms of the addition that is being amended.
Yeah, order number was provided to us, and it updates our discussion and the finalization of the appointments and the dates are proposed. And then, as I say, I was just looking at the whereas's, and I kind of deduced that there's just one more, one more step in the process of how we got here. And if the board supports that, it's just acknowledging the vote of the people on November 2nd, you know, affirming the opt-out. Just, it's a whereas, it's, you know, just substantive in, in the background.
Yes, it was a vote.
So that would be a proposed change for that. As presented, yeah.
I support that.
We could add that. If we want to give a blow-by-blow, I'm wondering if, if then you want to elaborate on the next whereas, kind of explaining why, you know, why Deschutes County is now unique in, in having lost marijuana tax revenue and how this is, you know, our, our pathway to securing it again, or being eligible again.
What kind of, the whereas at the beginning maybe even that? So to ensure that county continues to participate in marijuana economy?
Okay.
Yeah, as I say, it was a, it was a phone call this morning to say, hey, but what about this other one little step here, you know, the citizens vote?
Sure, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, it just, like, I'm, you know, depending on how much history we want to give, I.
Yeah.
We could make it even more complete.
We could write a book.
So do we need a motion on this then?
So that's the proposal, if the appointments and terms, proposed initial terms are agreed upon. And I'm supportive also.
I move approving the appointment of a cannabis advisory panel, order number 2021-045.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much. But then the first meeting will be on the Monday night, the 18th, I think is, it's a Monday night meeting, correct?
Right.
Oh, did we hear back from Representative Zika or Crop yet?
We have not. Commissioner Dare received a follow-up confirmation. I did, did send emails reminding them of this meeting, and I'm currently preparing a packet that will also be forwarded to, to the entire panel, set of panelists, as well as the state representatives.
So in that meeting will be in this room?
Mr. Chairman, it will be, is scheduled to be in the Barnes and Sawyer rooms here from 6:00 to 8:00 with some snacks to be made available beforehand. There will be a Zoom feature, a videographer made available, and.
So yeah, if it's, it may possibly be remote if they're, you know, if it's tight for a schedule, is what I was getting to, so.
Correct.
But yeah, well, it's time to make phone calls, make sure they.
Right, or send him a text.
Or something.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much on that topic. Nick?
Commissioners, I included in your mailbox Eric Crop had drafted the letter regarding to RV Park owners on behalf of two commissioners. We could have waited until he came back next week, but I suggested, let's go ahead and proceed if we have a draft letter, if you're prepared to discuss it. So it's presented to you for your consideration. I assume you, do you each have a copy of it with?
Yes, I have a copy.
Okay, just, I'm just confirming, thank you.
And I had a chance to, to review drafts of this letter and, and provide input back to Eric. I'm, I'm happy with the, the current language.
Yeah, I didn't.
There might be like one extra. There might be one extra, there might be one extra line space in here that we could take out, but that's, you know, it's a very minor formatting thing.
Well, so I'll acknowledge that, I mean, this is a letter from two commissioners to private property owners operating in RV Park in our county, pointing out that there's a legislative opportunity to host, I mean, I guess, yeah, what's the terminology we're using here at this time?
Well, what is?
An emergency shelter.
To support, yes, host an emergency.
With the requirement of partnering with an organization with experience operating in emergency shelter.
Yep, so the letter basically notifies people of the opportunity, gives them a sense of the parameters, you know, how it works, and the timeline, and acknowledges the need for emergency shelters in our community, and, and just says, if you have any interest in doing this, let's talk.
So as I say, I'm not supportive of this letter, so if my signature isn't here, I don't see what the opportunity is to diversify or secure revenue streams.
I, I don't, I don't foresee any landowner hosting an emergency shelter or some other facility without being compensated.
By whom?
Potentially by the county, potentially by the state, potentially by the federal government. There are, you know, it seems like with the increasing policy focus on this, there's more opportunities every day to find.
So, yeah.
Potentially from philanthropic sources.
So I, my thought is, I mean, if this letter is sent out, I'll, I'll be one of the people to call each property owner and apologize that our government sent you this letter. I mean, this is, I'm not supportive at all. But as I say, if there's two signatures, that's fine if you want to do that.
Yeah, you don't, it's not a letter from you, and so you don't have to worry too much about it.
Oh, I will though, I'll contact each. Oh, I will, though. I'll contact each of them and apologize.
That's fine. And I'm happy to just make it a letter from me if I have to.
You know, you hear the stories every once in a while, someone that has an old RV, you know, 20, 30 years old, and somebody else in the community gives them a new RV, and maybe that new RV is a, you know, a way to transition back into, you know, like an RV park. They have a new RV, they would fit in an RV park, and, you know, so some, you know, I, when you hear those stories, you think, okay, there is a chance. And then again, you drive over by Hummel Road and you see what has happened there and the continuation of that, and you know that that's, that's really not, it's, it's going to be a winter and we, winter is, is much harder on people that are living outside.
Yeah, so I don't have anything else to say. I mean, there's two signatures or.
So Commissioner Dare, do you, how do you feel about the language right now?
No, I said, I said it was okay.
Okay.
You know, it's.
So then is there a motion for this letter in this form?
Do we need a motion?
Typically, you would, you would have a motion, especially with a split.
Okay.
Vote on this.
Okay. I move approval of this letter to RV park owners in Deschutes County notifying them of opportunities associated with House Bill 2006, and I plan to sign the letter.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes no.
And just to be clear on that, the reason it required a vote is it does indicate that the Board of Commissioners, so it's an entity, and that two of you are, at least two of you are in support of it. If this was just from one commissioner, for instance, it wouldn't have required any type of vote or formal action.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay.
Okay, is there any other, other items? I don't know that I brought anything. So welcome back to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is the afternoon session, October 6th. We were just going to be started knowing that you'd step in the door in a moment, and that worked out great. So this is our item number 10, Youth Success Partnership Program Update. I'd like to take a moment to say hi to Jim Bowen, haven't seen you in a long time. I think you were at the school and my son was there, so good to see you.
Thanks, Tony, good to see you.
Yes. So, yeah, how are we going to get started here? Who's starting?
Yeah, thanks.
Oh, there we go.
Sabone, we are still.
Oh, yeah, no rush.
A couple of folks to come in. Nahad, do you want to, and Nahad was going to kick us off.
Well, we can wait a minute, yeah, not a problem. So we just felt bad because we saw there was a conversation on Zoom that we weren't part of without our microphones on, so that was the other part of this. So there, no, there's no rush. We can stand by for another person or two.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Well, it definitely looks like fall, a bright, clear fall day all of a sudden.
And it feels like it in the morning.
Yeah.
Did you guys get rain last night?
Yeah, it was, it was wet at my house.
Really?
It was just enough, just enough to kind of roll off the roof a little bit. So it wasn't a lot, but you could tell it was just dripping.
It rained, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they said on the news that it had rained, and I went, I went out, I went, uh-uh, I don't see any here.
Yeah, we did.
And well, let's hope it was at least a half an inch, right?
It was.
Doubtful.
Minimal.
Free drops.
It was enough to drip a little, that's exactly it.
Jim, where are those, where are those endless mountains behind you in real life?
Those are the Wallawa Mountains.
Nice.
The, one of the peaks, and my son got up early and hiked to the top to get there for sunrise and took this photo.
There you go.
If you know my son, that's an impressive feat just to get up before sunrise. Lone Club Mountain, but before sunrise is the bigger feat.
Yep.
It's a beautiful picture.
Yeah, looks like it was worth it.
I think Jessica, we're waiting for Laura at this point, correct?
We are, yes.
Okay, well, I just don't want to hold up the commissioners. We have a really busy schedule, so if you're, commissioners, I can maybe get started with the opening remarks, or Jessica, you want to get started?
No, I think, I think that would be great. Thanks, Nahad.
Sure, sure. Is that okay with you commissioners?
Yes, please.
Or if you want, want to just introduce all those people, well, that could take a couple minutes, too.
I, I get to do that.
So I think, so I'm just following the instructions from Jessica. As I have said in the past, I follow her lead and I'm supposed to give the opening remarks, and then I think we're going to get into the introductions, if that's okay. So, good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you for agreeing to offer us this time. We know you have a tight schedule, and I had hoped to be there in person with you. However, I'm following the protocol for quarantine at this point, so I wanted to make sure that I do what's right for myself and for my family and community. So commissioners, we're here to give you an update on the progress of the Youth Success Partnership Initiative. As you may recall, in the last budget cycle, you and the Budget Committee kindly approved this partnership between Deschutes County and Ben Lepine School Districts to co-invest in improving the health and success of our community's youth, who, by the way, in Ben Lepine School District, alone comprise nearly 10% of the total county population. The premise for the investment that, the premise for this investment was that we, as a community, are reaching the youth when it's too late. In fact, STDs, vaping, tobacco, teen pregnancy, suicide, ideation, and other harmful forces reach them before we do. You, as commissioners, took an important step in addressing this gaping hole in the system by approving this initiative. And this will undoubtedly be part of your, and I believe, our collective legacy, and you are especially known to our community as champions for the youth. So our work started literally the day after the Budget Week ended on Saturday, June 5th, at 9:30 a.m. Jessica and I talked over the phone both to celebrate this amazing opportunity, and importantly, to plan the next steps and get to work. And boy, did the team get to work. And although there are so many people to thank and acknowledge from within our organization, from Ben Lepine School Districts, our awesome consultants, I really do want to put the spotlight on Jessica Jackson and embarrass her a little bit. She has worked behind the scenes for so many years to make this opportunity a reality for our communities. If I had to summarize Jessica in one word, it would be the word tenacity. She just doesn't give up, and I feel so fortunate to have her as part of our team. Now, before, so thank you, Jessica, for everything you have done and continue to do, and the awesome people you have recruited also, who will carry this legacy and move it forward. Now, before giving the floor to Jessica and back to my colleagues, I wanted to go perhaps back to why we are here today. In June, we promised that we will be transparent and accountable throughout this process. Today, you will hear about the amazing progress thus far and some of the real challenges that we're facing. You will also hear about the remarkable partnerships brewing between two gigantic organizations with different missions, processes, and procedures, but frankly, with one heart. And that heart is solely focused on preparing our youth for success in life. So thank you, commissioners, for making yourselves available, and we look forward to engaging with you, learning from you today. And importantly, we hope you walk away from this presentation proud of the work that you have envisioned. Over to Jessica.
Thanks, Nahad. And I, I usually say perseverance, but tenacity is nice, too, and I would say it's fueled by knowing, being surrounded by good people who are doing good work and know, like you said, have such devotion to our community and our community's youth. So, so thank you for the kind words. And for the record, I am Jessica Jacks, Supervisor of Prevention and Health Promotion, and I have the honor of introducing our team here today. But before I do this, I want to give just a brief update because we came to you back in June and before with the name of Youth Success Partnership, and we have changed the name. And there were several reasons for this. We've changed the name to Healthy Schools. The first reason is that we, as we began to work with Ben Lepine Schools, kind of really more intimately with, with staff, we began to realize how often the word success is used, youth success, student success, and it was becoming confusing. So we knew we needed to, to do some tweaking there. Secondly, the name Healthy Schools is in alignment with the framework that we have adopted for this work, and you'll hear more about that very shortly. So we've changed the name and will be launching a communications awareness campaign to help underscore that name change, but also to more formally introduce the initiative. And we hope that you can begin to use this, this new name as well in your conversations. And now, I'm very pleased to introduce our team here today. Collectively, we make up the Steering Committee. A handful of us also serve on the Operations Team, and we have been meeting weekly since you approved this work. From Ben Lepine Schools, we have with us today Laura Nordquist, Deputy Superintendent. We also have Jennifer House, Director of Social, Emotional, and Mental Wellbeing. I want to recognize two individuals who aren't here today from Ben Lepine Schools, and that's Sean Reinhardt, Director of Student Services, and Julian Retman, Director of Safety and Communication. From Public Health, your very own Public Health, we have Nahad Sodar Azodi. Thanks so much for leading, leading us here at Public Health, myself, Amy Snyder. I will give a little bit longer introduction to Amy. She is our Healthy School Supervisor. We also have from our team who aren't present here today, Tom Kuhn, Community Health Program Manager, Lindsay Seibel, who is our very first Public Health Specialist, one of those individuals that will be in the school setting. She is assigned to the Bend High School cluster, area cluster of schools. Our second Public Health Specialist will start November 1st, and that person will be assigned to the Lepine High School area. We have from High Desert Educational Service District, Jim Bowen. Jim serves as the Regional Director of Mental and Behavioral Health. We also have our consultant, Jess Lawrence, who is the Director of Current Guidance. She's actually being paid out of a grant, a separate funding stream from Ben Lepine Schools. She's a National School Health Consultant and really helped to get us on track with National School, excuse me, current research and resources. So really thankful to have you here, Jess, and, and everyone part of this team. So I, before I turn it over to Amy, who really has the bulk of this show with our presentation, I wanted to give you a little bit more in-depth knowledge of two individuals. In addition to Amy, Jennifer House, both represent our collective agencies, and I really feel that they are the boots on the ground. They are leading this strongly. They're the street team, they're making these things happen. And I also would say they're, they're a bit of unicorns. They have a skill set that I am very honored to get to work along, alongside and learn from, and they're just perfect in so many ways for the role, for this, for this particular project. So with that, Jennifer House is the Director of Social, Emotional, and Mental Wellbeing for Ben Lepine Schools. She has a Master's in Educational Administration and a Master's in Marriage and Family Therapy. Jennifer recently arrived from the Bay Area, we'll try not to hold that against you, where she helped to implement a multi-tiered system of support. And if you hang around with school folks, multi-tiered system of support is their lingo. I think it's akin to our public health language when we say comprehensive approach. It, it means good work is being done in a very thoughtful manner. So she brought about academic interventions and social emotional support for all students in the San Mateo, Mateo Union High School District. She was a part of a team that designed and built a mental health program for students, and she also led the school counselors to build a comprehensive school counseling program. Jennifer is a mom as well, and in order to stay involved with her children's education, she served for three years as a board member for her child's after-school program and as the parent chair for the school site council at her child's elementary school. As I mentioned, Jennifer recently moved to our area from the, from the Bay Area, and she told me that she likes having access to the outdoors with her family. And this is really great because her hobbies are rafting, hiking, snowboarding, relaxing, and seeing live music. I'd like to hang out with you, Jennifer. So, next, Amy Snyder. Very happy to have Amy in Deschutes County Health Services, serving as the Healthy Schools Supervisor. She is a Doctor of Public Health. Her research and practice focused on implementing and evaluating school-based interventions. So we're pretty lucky to have you. She comes to Deschutes County with two years of experience as a manager for prevention and health promotion programs at another local public health department in Oregon. She has five years of experience as a public school teacher and about 10 years of experience coordinating and evaluating school health programs. Amy shared with me that she enjoys reading fiction, capturing narratives, which, as you get to know Amy, you'll understand from her qualitative research background, a little bit more about what capturing narratives mean. She swims, she bikes, and she likes to run with training groups. So we're really, really set up with a strong expertise, background on this team, and I'm, I'm super excited to be working alongside these folks. So I am going to turn it over to Amy, who is going to deliver our presentation, and I believe you all received the slides that we will be presenting. Great.
All right, is everybody able to see my screen?
Yes.
Are you able to hear? Excellent. All right, well, I will go ahead and get us moving through. For this presentation, we have two main sections of slides that we'll cover. A very brief section about our planning process, and then we have a second, larger section about what we have accomplished over the last three months with that planning process, which includes developing our program plan and key metrics. These two sections should take about 20 minutes, and the remaining time is left for questions and discussion. In addition to what we'll cover in our presentation, there are supplemental slides in the slide deck that you should have with you. that you should have with you. These supplemental starts, slides start on slide 20. And then there's also a two-page document that gives extra information about the importance of school health and our approach. So for our planning process, this graphic illustrates our program planning process, which is based on best practices and public health program planning and implementation. It's important to note that program planning and implementation are rarely linear and that we often circulate back and forth through these steps. But in general, our process includes engaging stakeholders at multiple levels, reviewing data and relevant research and literature, building our healthy schools infrastructure and developing our program plan. These first four steps are what we have been processing through for the past three months. And then the rest of this presentation describes the results from these first four steps. Then moving forward from where we are today, we'll be continuing on in these steps, beginning to implement our plan with a Plan Do Study Act process for continuous quality improvement as we implement. And then as we move towards year two, we'll be evaluating, iterating and scaling out and then repeating. Before moving into what we have accomplished through this program planning process, I want to highlight that Healthy Schools is a multi-level project. To be effective at planning and implementing this project, we must engage stakeholders at all of these levels and often with different groups of people at each of these levels. We're engaging with stakeholders, processing that information, engaging with additional stakeholders to gather more information or to confirm that information, and then circling back to share what we've taken away and how we've incorporated into our plan to get even more feedback. This is a time-intensive and critical process for building relationships, assessing needs, priorities and readiness, building the program to meet the needs and readiness so that it will be accepted, and then to make the most efficient and effective use of our resources. For our accomplishments, this slide shows a summary of what we've accomplished through our planning process so far. These include establishing our steering and operations committees, as Jessica had described, developing a contract between the two partnering entities detailing how we will each contribute and integrate our resources, convening an introductory meeting with key stakeholders, including a listening session to collect input, implementing a follow-up survey to gather additional input from those stakeholders, recruiting, hiring and now training our healthy school staff and contracting our consultant. We've adopted our best practice model from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. We've defined the varying roles and responsibilities for the public health specialists and how they will fit into the existing roles and responsibilities in school services and the prevention team. We've reviewed baseline data and relevant research. We've gone on listening tours to the four most affected schools this year, which include Ben Senior High and Lepine Senior High and the middle schools and their geographic areas. We've developed our mission goals and key metrics and outlined our implementation and evaluation plans and timelines. The bolded items that you see on this slide are the ones that we're going to spend the rest of this presentation highlighting. The intro meeting brought together representatives from the district, Lepine and Ben High Schools areas and various public health programs together for the first time to talk specifically about Healthy Schools and to introduce this program. During this meeting, attendees identified the opportunities for school health or the opportunities of school health or healthy schools program, excuse me, brings and the challenges that exist for school health. Here are a list of some of the opportunities and challenges that were identified at this meeting. I'll pause for a moment so that you can skim through the list. A key takeaway from this activity was the importance of clarifying the role of the public health specialist early on and providing outreach to parents. We have used this input to develop a roles and responsibilities matrix and are using the input to develop our strategic communications plan. This slide shows the model that we have adopted as a framework and guide for our Healthy Schools program. The blue parts of this model that you see on the slide, originally called the Coordinated School Health Model, were developed by the CDC, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and have been considered the best practice for school health since 1987. In recent years, this model was expanded to be called the WISC model, which stands for the whole school, whole community and whole child. And that's that whole model that you see on the slide. This expanded WISC model is what you see on the slide, but based on the evidence-based coordinated school health components in blue are the same as they had been originally. And many of the programs and practitioners who've been using this model for 10 or so years, as I have, we often still call this the coordinated school health approach or the coordinated school health model. And if you search the internet for coordinated school health, you'll see that many states, counties and districts across the US have institutionalized this model into their education systems. This coordinated school health approach addresses the 10 key components for comprehensive school health, which include health education, physical education and activity, nutrition environment and services, health services, counseling, psychological and social services, social and emotional climate, physical environment, employee wellness, family engagement and community involvement. Along with this model is a companion resource from the CDC called the School Health Index. The School Health Index is a comprehensive guide or guidance manual for implementing the coordinated school health model, which includes a comprehensive assessment for each of those 10 key components using evidence-based standards from multiple ongoing surveillance systems and research reviews. The School Health Index identifies gaps in the school health practices and guides teams through a collaborative prioritization and action planning process to address those gaps. The CDC's coordinated school health model, or the WISC model, has been integrated or implemented across the United States and in Oregon. In Tennessee, this model is implemented statewide through legislative funding using taxpayer funds. Every district and every school in Tennessee has a full-time school health coordinator implementing the same model. The state of Texas also has a law requiring coordinated school health programs in all of their schools using the same model. When I was a middle school teacher in Arizona, our county implemented coordinated school health on a county-wide level, starting in 2010. As a teacher, I received a stipend and training from the county and did this work outside of and on top of my role as a language arts teacher. I used the School Health Index, organized a representative school health council and successfully implemented this approach collaboratively as it was intended in the model. We received county and national recognition for our results. I ended up leaving teaching that following year to pursue a career in public health, which led me here because I had a passion and skillset for this type of school health work. We were not the norm in our county as many teachers were asked to take on this additional work. And they may not have had the same passion this time and the health promotion skillset available for the initiative. But for my school, because we used this model, the School Health Index so thoroughly and collaboratively, we changed policies and practices as a coalition of admin, staff, parents and students. Because we engaged that entire school community, some of the initiatives we started that year were still going raw, still going strong five years after I left being the coordinator. Including, we organized a community 5K race that included a car show and a PTA pancake breakfast. It was a little of something for everything, for everyone, and we kept it going strong. Oregon currently has CDC funding, along with 15 other states to use this model for the Oregon Healthy Schools program. But this funding mechanism limits the state of Oregon's work to just six school districts, none of which are in central Oregon, and their grant limits their focus to nutrition, physical education and activity and managing chronic disease. One benefit of our local funding is that we can use this evidence-based approach to address our local needs and priorities. The state of Oregon has used this coordinated school health model since at least 2010, most strongly whenever grant funding is available for it. In 2013, under a larger grant, Oregon conducted an analysis of the relationship between what they defined as the school health core capacity and student behaviors and academic outcomes. The core capacity was defined as the four essential components for sustainable and evidence-based school health approaches, including one, having a designated school health coordinator, two, having conducted a evidence-based school health assessment such as the CDC's School Health Index, three, having a school health council that includes school leaders and community partners, four, including a health goal and objective in their school improvement plan, which is an educational plan. Oregon's analysis found that one in nine or 11% of Oregon's middle and high schools were able to demonstrate core capacity and found that those with core capacity implemented more evidence-based school health practices, had more students reaching the positive youth development benchmark, which I'll describe in a later slide, had healthier student behaviors, had higher grades in high schools, had three fewer attendance violations per 100 students, four fewer disciplinary actions per 100 students and higher four-year graduation rates. As I mentioned, only one in nine of Oregon middle and high schools were able to demonstrate this core capacity for sustainable school health. The barriers to reaching this core capacity were identified as having the designated staff time and leadership to facilitate the process. The analysis concluded that having a designated school health coordinator at at least 0.5 full-time employment equivalent, or FTE, was the key enabling factor to reaching this core capacity and those associated outcomes. Essentially, our Healthy Schools Public Health Specialists provide this school health coordination and expert leadership for their assigned high school and the middle school that feeds into that high school. From our data review and discussion of priorities with our stakeholders, we have identified six data-driven focus areas for school health and, or for student health and development. These six areas include suicide, substance use, sexually transmitted infections, teen pregnancy, immunizations and positive youth development. Data on the first five focus areas have been presented to you in the past in previous presentations or in discussions. Since that time, we have also reviewed the district's student health data from the 2020 Oregon Student Health Survey and confirmed that these are priority areas. The final focus area, Positive Youth Development, was indicated from the 2020 Student Health Survey as well as a review of literature showing the consistent association between positive youth development and our other focus areas as well as academic achievement. Positive youth development is a strengths-based approach to building youth confidence and competence, their social connectedness and engagement at school and engaging them in civic service such as volunteering or advocacy. It originates from 4H and has a strong research and practice base. Positive youth development will be an early indicator of our progress towards changing the more complex student behaviors and student health outcomes listed above in these data-driven focus areas. Our mission for Healthy Schools is to provide public health services directly to schools and school communities using collaborative, systemic and integrative approaches so that school leaders, staff, students and families in Deschutes County have access to high-quality health promoting programs. The goals that we've landed on are, one, increase health, social and emotional supports in schools; two, increase students reaching the positive youth development benchmark; three, reducing unmet physical and mental and emotional health needs amongst students; and four, reducing disparities in our focus areas by certain student groups. This slide presents a summary of our first year implementation plan, which is broken down into three levels. First is our internal work as a program. In summary, this year, we are hiring and training our staff, creating our program materials, which include our program plan, a strategic communications plan and communications materials and a resource map. We are also establishing our internal tracking and performance monitoring system for our process evaluation and quality improvement process. Second, at the district level, we will be reporting the district's 2020 student health data out to stakeholder groups across the district and listening to their responses to that data to identify their priorities and readiness for change. We will provide professional development for and with the district and will review the approved curricula for health education, make recommendations and support a revision process based on the district's readiness. We will also support our related, other related program development and implementation for the district, including programic areas such as social and emotional learning. Third, on the right-hand side, at the school level, in our first two vertical school clusters, our public health specialists will be very busy building relationships and building the school's core capacity for school health, which will include implementing at least three school health index modules. One for family engagement, two, health education and three, social and emotional climate. They will use their public health expertise to identify, recommend, adapt and implement evidence-based programs and changes to address the prioritized gaps identified through the collaborative school health index process. We will, or they will, provide communications and outreach to parents, groups of students and school staff. And last, they will also provide resource navigation to prevent or improve linkages to services for staff, students and parents. This slide presents a selection of objectives that we will use as key performance indicators along our timeline of program implementation. The first column on the left are a selection of objectives we aim to reach within the first year of implementing our Healthy Schools program in the first cohort of schools. And for supporting the district's health education structures to lay a strong foundation for our work at the school level in all years to come. The middle column includes a learning or includes the learning and environmental objectives we aim to reach within one to three school years. These objectives are the intermediating changes to key influencing factors that shape students' behaviors and outcomes. These include building parent knowledge and skills to address students' needs at home and to reinforce the messages that they will also hear at school from school staff, which is a highly effective practice. This middle column also includes changes to the school services, protocols and environment to surround the students and health promoting practices using the School Health Index as a guide. The third column or last column are the behavioral and outcome objectives we aim to reach at three years and after. These include reducing substance use, poor sexual health and mental health outcomes and decreasing unmet health needs and increasing attendance and reducing disparities in our focus areas. On this slide, you may notice that some metrics do not have a specific measure of success, having X percent as a placeholder. That's because we are committed to making data-driven decisions. For each of those metrics with X percent, we're reviewing meaningful and reasonable measures of change set by leading the public health entities and relevant school-based intervention research and evaluated programs. And we will be updating those as we identify what those data-driven measures are. Oops, I went too far. This slide summarizes our overall evaluation approach. Each year, we will have ongoing data collection using the School Health Index's assessments and will track our changes towards reaching more of those evidence-based standards in the School Health Index. We will also have evaluation pieces from programs that are implemented in the schools such as Upshift or Connect workshops that fill those gaps that we've identified. And we will be able to measure changes in knowledge and skills with those programic assessments. We will also have our internal tracking and monitoring process for our implementation and continuous quality improvement processes. Then every other year, on even years, we will use the Oregon Student Health Survey data to assess our intermediary and long-term outcomes for Healthy Schools using a cohort model. We're also looking into additional metrics at this point that we may be able to use, including school policy violations, missed school days, a CDC school health assessment that's done on the district level and then items from a survey that the district is also conducting for at least two more years. We'll have surveillance data as well on the ZIP code level that will give us indicators of change for certain metrics like immunizations and STIs. This slide provides a visual of the evaluation timeline. In green, you can see the phase and approach that we're using, having two vertical clusters of schools joining the program each year. A vertical cluster is a high school and the middle and elementary schools in that same geographic area that feed into that high school. The light blue arrow that's going towards the right shows our ongoing yearly process and short-term evaluations that we'll have. Then the dark blue boxes and arrows, you can see the primary method for assessing all of our intermediary and long-term outcomes using the Oregon Student Health Survey. In this, because we have a cohort model, we'll we'll be able to collapse our data into school cohorts. And so we'll be able to look at Cohort 1 in 2022 to see if we're making progress towards those three-year goals. And then in 2024, we'll be able to see how Cohort 1 responds to three years of the Healthy Schools program. Reaching these goals and metrics are based on assumptions that we will be able to implement our program as planned. These assumptions include that we'll continue to have in-person schooling this year and the coming years, that we will have buy-in and engagement from the school staff, and that we will be able to recruit and retain public health specialists in each of those vertical clusters, that we'll be able to fully integrate the public health specialists into their high school and middle schools, and that they will be able to reach the staff, students, and parents effectively through their schools. And finally, for evaluation, that we will be able to access school-level data that are accurate, comparable, and timely, and that we will continue to have investment in healthy schools at the local or regional level to maintain our focus on our local priorities and to be able to scale out to be most effective. And that is the end of the presentation. And then we have the rest of the time for discussion and questions. And I will stop sharing.
Great job. Thank you very much for getting through all that. Any questions to start off?
I was just wondering, how soon do you contact the chronically absent? If someone's missed like five days already in the school year, hasn't gone on that long? I mean, is that somebody that you're going to call and trying to figure out what's going on? I mean, does somebody have that capacity in order to really... Definitely, our graduation rates aren't quite there. They could be better.
I think someone from our school district might be better positioned.
I'm happy to jump in first, and Jennifer, feel free to join me. So Patty, thanks for that question. One thing I would say about absenteeism is it tends to reflect other issues. So when Amy pointed out the things that we're talking about in terms of suicide prevention, you know, the indicators of issues, those are often the causes of absenteeism. We already have established systems in schools that if absenteeism were the only issue, you know, we've got systems in place in our schools to connect with students about that. It's not... Well, I won't get into all the data on that. I don't think that's your question. But I want to say that I think what's really important about this program is it's addressing the root causes that lead to problems such as chronic absenteeism.
Yeah, I would echo the same. Yeah, we have a multi-tiered system of support where we are addressing those pieces. We have our school counselors at all of the schools, and we have our new tier-three mental health program. So we do have things that are working to address this. This is going to be just an added benefit where we're going to collaborate and really be able to address some of those root causes as well.
Thank you.
That was a very densely packed presentation. Thank you for sharing all of that. One thing I may have missed or may have just slipped by me was I was trying to get a sense or a feel for when the staff and these programs we're putting in place first start to make contact with our school kids with these goals and these tools in mind. And, you know, maybe it's already happening, but I would love to just get a feel for kind of where do we see the Healthy Schools initiative, you know, first, you know, connecting with kids or, you know, you know, having interventions in their lives.
Right now, we have our start dates set for November 1st for Bend Senior High and November 16th for Lapine High. And that's based on when we were able to get our staff hired and trained and get our program materials developed. We also plan on rolling out a communications launch at the same time so that we are sharing information in the school community about what this new program is and how it can be best utilized.
And what does that look like? Like, what does that contact with kids look like? Is it, you know, is it kind of like advertisement? Hey, we're here? Or are you, you know, are you in classes with kids? Or just trying to get a sense of kind of what implementation of the initiative looks like?
Initially, most of the contact will be with the school staff and working with the school staff to identify the best course of action that's going to fit into their existing needs and priorities. And then at the district level, I'm also working at the district level to work on the health education and supporting their initiatives. But at the school level, it's really going to be tailored to what the school-specific needs are. Though we are focused in those three main areas of the family engagement, the health education, and social and emotional climate, we will eventually be getting into classes, and it really depends on when we get invited into the classes. So we may be in some spaces like the student success space or the health education courses most, I would say, most proximally. And then if there's student groups that are already convening, so lunchtime groups or after-school groups, the public health specialists will likely make contact with them pretty soon, especially like our youth engagement groups that are in some of the schools already or our youth action councils, I believe they're called. So it really might just depend on what kind of invites and open doors we have and what fits best within what's already happening at the schools. We don't want to go in with a really prescribed plan that isn't really being responsive to what the schools need. And we want to make sure that we're able to follow the School Health Index around what the schools really need and their priorities that they have.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? I guess, you know, thank you very much for the thorough package. I'm looking through the focus areas here, but as I say, I don't have any questions at this time.
Commissioner Devon, one of the selected clusters is Lapine. I thought you, that would please the board. And my mind, I mean, I've seen this presentation, but I'm blown away. I like the way you mentioned Commissioner Chang, the dense presentation. It's been a dense three months. And this group is not just doing this. I mean, Jessica Jackson, other people are from school district, from our teams. They're doing other work in addition to this as well. So there is a lot going on. But today, I just feel, at the risk of sounding paternalistic, I feel so proud. I feel proud to be with this community, with this county, and with this team. So I know Doris is going to give the closing remarks, but I just felt like I had to get this off my chest.
Great. Well, yeah, a lot of pride there, I can tell. Yeah, so you mentioned the vertical clusters. So it'll be good, you know, the Bend-Lapine Schools has got multiple clusters, obviously, based in the high schools. And more coming online. You know, the Bend High School and then Lapine High School are, you know, those are the historical schools also. So that'll be interesting to get started at the kind of the foundation of what Bend-Lapine Schools has been and be able to grow back into the next other cluster areas also.
I did want to, I did want to also just ask about evaluation. I'm glad that you have very clearly laid out metrics for the program. And I want to get a sense of, you know, when you, some of these things, you'll, some of the short-term metrics, you'll know whether you're hitting them fairly soon. But some of the other kind of mid- and long-term metrics, how often do you anticipate sort of collecting that information and evaluating it? And, you know, I'm also curious, when we'll hear about, you know, those evaluations as well? Like, when we might expect to hear back some, you know, on some of those kind of numerical metrics, how we're doing with this program?
Or process-wise, we can definitely produce a process evaluation after the first year. So over that summer, we'll be able to report on that using the School Health Index, which will have some metrics on the activities that we've done. As far as producing intermediary outcomes, that middle column of that slide that I showed you, 2022, a fall of that year, we'll have the Oregon Student Health Survey data. So after we're able to get that data from the state, we'll be able to show what we've been able to change as far as positive youth development, which is a predictor of changes in those other focus areas. We'll also be able to see the other metrics for unmet health needs as well as substance use, though we expect those to take longer to change because they're much more complex behaviors and outcomes. But the positive youth development is consistently and strongly associated with changes in that. So if we're changing positive youth development, that is evidence-based, research-based, to be on a trajectory to be changing the other ones. So I would say probably spring, so January to March-ish of 2023, we should be able to have a report. That depends, though, on getting the data from Oregon, the state of Oregon.
Thank you.
And Commissioner, just to add quickly that from a big-picture perspective, decades of neglect cannot be addressed in two, three years. That's just not realistic or feasible. So we are putting the foundation in place during this pilot phase. And thankfully, we're going to reap the benefits of the foundation perhaps two to three years moving forward. Just wanted to mention that in order to manage expectations and understand the complexity of building this foundation and the relationships that are needed to make this program a success.
That's a good reminder that you don't turn a huge ship very quickly. And it was also very helpful to hear in your presentation just the evidence and the experience of other places where, you know, the evidence that you have that these practices are effective and successful. And so, you know, that helps me with, you know, just diving in on faith for a few years until we can start to see the, you know, even if it's just anecdotally, see the impact of the work.
But we will be hearing from you before January 23, will we not?
Yes.
I mean, that seems quite a ways out there.
That's a good request. There you go.
Yeah.
Well, and I'd like to jump in just for a minute on that because I don't think that all you'll see is diving in on faith. There are lots of implementation metrics. Amy referred to them as process metrics. So I would charge the commissioners and our Board of Directors as well to hold us to the implementation process. As you all mentioned, that's a complex process, and there are lots of pieces. And so we should be held accountable to make sure that we're implementing with fidelity the research design and the intervention design that we put into place here. And we will certainly be presenting on that and want to be held accountable for that.
Thank you.
So looking through the couple, the memo provided by, I don't know if this was like a Deschutes County memo, Healthy Schools in Deschutes County, and then the supplemental information, chronically absent, you know, that is a metric that jumped out at me. And I'll see in the 18%, 21%, and 27%, chronically absent rates from 1819. That's one that's really interesting. I think of 20%. I mean, could somebody put some definitions around that? Because my mind kind of goes pretty bad about. Do you mean there's 20% of the kids not at school every day? But there's probably...
You miss 10%.
There's probably ways we look at that number. And, you know, chronically absent maybe times missed during the year or whatever. Could you help me with that just a little bit?
I didn't know. Jennifer, do you want to?
Yeah, whoever.
I'm happy to jump in. It's a student who misses, Jim, it's 10% right of the school days. So it doesn't mean on any given day 20% of the students are absent. It might mean that we have 20% of the students who, over the course of the year, have missed 10% or more of the instructional day. So for example, a school could have a 94% attendance rate and still have a significant number of students who are chronically absent from the school. The piece of that, it's an important piece of data, and we pay a lot of attention to it, as Jennifer said, in our existing multi-tiered systems of support. What's interesting in Bend-Lapine is that for some students, it's being chronically absent is not necessarily a predictor of their success. So our students are in high socioeconomic status. I mean, we have students who go on long trips, who miss school every week because they're part of Mount Bachelor, you know, Ski Education Foundation, and they're seriously training. So that's why it's part of a bigger process where we're looking at, are they absent a significant amount of times? What do their grades look like? How many discipline referrals do we have? So it's looked at in tandem with other indicators. And who are the students, then, who are the students of concern? So it has some value as a benchmark, but there's a reason that it's not something that we really emphasized in our own evaluation plan here because there are a lot of nuances about chronic absenteeism.
Yeah, well, thank you. As I say, seeing a 20% number is shocking. And I got to imagine a junior or a senior that has, you know, some car keys is going to be a lot different than a middle schooler who's, you know, really struggling and trying to, you know, just be in the right place at the right time. So, yeah, good. Thank you.
Can I just ask one question?
Please, Nick.
Thank you. One of the slides I really appreciate is that you've identified the factors that will affect implementation. And it's so valuable to be aware of that now. That might be a valuable update to the board in even just six months from school staff engagement. Are we able to retain the public health specialists that we've hired? Just how is the initial implementation going? And I think you've done a very nice job identifying those key factors. And it might be interesting to hear about that in six months or so once it's off the ground and in process.
Yeah, just the people involved in the kind of stability of the program, where change is happening.
Thanks, Nick. You know, we're kind of a shy group. So you have, you know, for us to come back, actually, we're hoping to come back during the mid-year review and also connect with our citizen members, the Budget Committee, because our colleagues there, especially Mike, was very much interested in this presentation and where we are with the planning phase. So we're hoping to have an opportunity, with your permission, to give you an update and revisit those assumptions.
That's an excellent idea. Yes, because it is a three-year fund.
All right. Well, is there anything else? Oh, yeah, I think there was some closing statements.
Well, Jessica sent me some closing statements, but Amy already talked about them, so I don't want to be repetitive. I think I just closed with saying that in Bend-Lapine Schools, and I'm looking at Jim here throughout the region, some of the strongest and most impactful work we have done has been through partnerships. And I think about, I'm looking at Jessica and our partnership with Deschutes County Public Health, our partnerships with Bend Police and Deschutes County Sheriff's Department, our partnerships with the Family Access Network. So I just want to thank the commissioners, and again, our own Board of Directors, for supporting this work. I'm very, very excited about the talent that we have assembled internally and Amy and Jess's consultation. Very excited about the prospects of this, serving such an important need for our students. So thank you from our entire team.
All right. Thank you so much for the update today.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for the partnership.
This will be first of many times we're together looking at this program from the highest level. And I know that it's truly the on-the-ground that really matters, you know, affecting... know, affecting individuals' lives and families, making best choices they can and optimizing their education opportunity.
It would really be wonderful to move our graduation eventually up to a higher level. Yes.
I agree. Okay, so thank you very much for joining us, everyone.
Thank you. Good to see you.
So we did have other items and an executive session before lunch. Is there anything else for today's meeting? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.